... citizens who've lost their lives to horrible gun violence in several locations all over our country, to people who've lost and their families and communities as they put their lives back together or try to. So keep me joining on this side.
[Inaudible]
Thank you, madam. For the roll call, please.
County Commissioner Escudero Barber, here. County Commissioner Kenny?
Here.
County Commissioner Hopple?
Here.
County Commissioner Nara?
Here.
County Commissioner Tamara?
Here.
County Commissioner Director Nara?
Yes. And do we have any recognitions this evening?
Yes. First, it's lifted in June fifteen, twenty twenty, as Elder and Peaceful Awareness Day in Middlesex County. Next is recognizing Ernest Albrecht for his service to Middlesex County Place in the Park. And next is proclaiming June twenty twenty as LGBT pride month in Middlesex County.
Can I have a motion to adopt the above recogitions?
Second.
Roll call?
County Commissioner Escudero Barber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
County Commissioner Hopple?
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara?
Here.
County Commissioner Tamara?
Here.
County Commissioner Deputy Director Nara?
Yes. And do we have any correspondence?
Yes, each commissioner can provide a list of correspondence received by the clerk's office since our last meeting, which correspond to the office of the third of the representative representative.
May I have a motion to accept the correspondence?
Second.
Voice vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any aye? Senator? Can I have, are there any issues to be discussed?
Yes, Board of Commissions, uh, excuse me, Board of County Commissioners, regular meeting, May nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, at seven o'clock here.
May I have a motion to accept the adopted above minutes?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call?
County Commissioner Escudero Barber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
County Commissioner Hopple?
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Deputy Director Nara?
Yes. Mr. Kelso, are there any resolutions to be added? Oh, I'm sorry, pardon me. Reports of commissioners. Commissioner Escudero Barber?
Thank you, Deputy Director Nara. The Middlesex County Office of Aging and Disabled Services has a needs assessment survey to gather data on the service needs of older adults, disabled persons, or their caregivers. Results from the survey will help identify existing and potential needs. Visit the county webpage or call the Office of Aging and Disabled Services to get a copy of the survey. I would like to thank all those that participated in the Replenish Down Below the Line event. The event raised over four thousand dollars, but more importantly, this event helped to raise the awareness of food insecurity and showcase our food pantries around Middlesex County. If you would like to watch the virtual edition of the event, you can visit the Replenish Facebook page. And that will be my report, Deputy Director Nara.
Thank you, Commissioner. County Commissioner Kenny?
Thank you, Deputy Director Nara. Just to Ron and Gary Solomon, thank you for your help in working out a solution to the issue on Fourscape Drive in Monroe. We had our president asking to have some striping put down, and the road is going to be milled in paint, but it's going to be later in the season, so to make it a little bit safer, they worked out the striping and getting that taken care of. Thank you very much. I also wanted to say last night that we had the pride flag raising here at the county building. I just want to thank Irene Mantini from the Woodbridge Police Department, Dave DiAmico from the County Corrections, and Janay Wade from the Prosecutor's Office for coming out and taking part in the program. They spoke about the efforts being made to have better communications in the community and at work. So I thank them, and I also want to thank Jane Clemente from the Tyler Clemente Foundation, who came out and took the time to come down and be with us and also speak during the program. So thank you, Karen. And that's all I have, Director. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Kenny. Commissioner Hopple?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Director. During the past five years, the Finance Department has concentrated efforts and resources to modernize many of its public fiscal functions and processes. The most important initiative occurred on January first, two thousand nineteen, when the county rolled out a brand-new, state-of-the-art financial system that has streamlined processes, eliminated paper-based procedures, and enhanced oversight. Wanting to create investment class, the Finance Department collaborated with the Office of Information Technology to take off the process of upgrading our state-of-the-art financial system to a version titled Finance Enterprise. This fully styled execution upgrade will provide Middlesex with improved user functionality, less difficulty with access to the environment, and a redesigned user interface. One functionality that has really made a major case lift is our contract management module. Due to newly available functions, this module will more effectively allow us to track resolutions, and particularly how they retain the finance functions. Overall, the anticipation of the version upgrade will be the next step forward to embrace technology and explain expand issues in everyday processes. Significantly, all of our efforts combined with the planning and hard work by the Middlesex County financial staff has allowed Middlesex County's fiscal operations to remain one hundred percent fully functioning during the recent challenging times without any interruption of this process of efficiency.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Shanice Cottrell-Collum?
Deputy Director Cottrell-Collum, from the Arts Institute, I'm pleased to report that June ten, eighteen, is going underway with live and virtual programming in Montec Antrop County. We would also like to thank the friends and central district chapters of the Underwood Institute for the leadership and collaboration of the Arts Institute in commemorating June ten. We command our municipalities and local libraries, too, for also facilitating local events to honor and pay tribute to our fellow Americans. Please visit our county website for further information on local events, including music, speeches, and dance performances. June is also Pride Month. We continue to celebrate and share stories of love, hope, and acceptance. The Arts Institute continues to host art and storytelling events virtually every Wednesday at four p.m. Please visit our county website to access previously recorded content and to register for upcoming events. From the Office of Career Opportunity, I'm having to inform you that planning is underway for the Office of Career Opportunities, gaining a job and resource care. An in-person event will be held on Wednesday, July twenty-seventh, at West Polk Parkview Room on the main campus of Middlesex College from ten a.m. to one p.m. Residents looking for a new career opportunity are encouraged to attend. For more information for the Office of Career Opportunities business solution team at seven three two, seven four five, two eight one four. Training will begin soon for residents who are interested in technology-driven jobs such as cybersecurity, health tests, project management, and data analytics. The Office of Career Opportunity is collaborating with several other counties in the state to launch Control, Alt, and Succeed, the public partnership of LinkedIn, ShiftUp, and Parker viewing. For additional information, please call seven three two, three two four, and seven six three nine. Classes are scheduled to begin later this month. I would like to conclude with a reminder that both our career one centers are open for in-person services. Schedule an appointment to meet with a career consultant on seven three two, seven four five, three nine five five. Deputy Director Cottrell-Collum.
Thank you. Commissioner Tamara?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Director. The countdown has started for opening night of our first summer show at Plays in the Park. Something Rotten Runs from Wednesday, June twenty-second through Saturday, July second. This show is set in the fifteen-nineties and is about the Bolton Brothers, who are attempting to write the world's first musical that will rival Woodbridge-Chaseburg Plays. All summer performances begin at eight p.m. and for more information about Plays in the Park can be found on our website. The Middlesex County Board of County Commissioners is proud to offer complimentary admission to Plays in the Park for active U.S. military service members and their families. Complimentary tickets are also available for our veterans and their families on Monday and Tuesday performances at each show. We thank you all for your service and hope to see you at Plays in the Park this summer. Spend your summer evenings with us in one of our beautiful parks and enjoy our free live music series, Music in the Park. The full two twenty twenty-two season schedule has been posted, so the dates, so any of the dates on your calendar, join us with your favorite long trip. Concerts are held at Red Bay Waterfront Park in South Amboy Serago, Joseph Midman Park in part red, Green Lake Park in South Plinkville, and Thompson's Park in Monroe-Chaseburg. For more information on all county park events, they'll always be found on our website. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. From the Department of our Environmental Division, as part of the county's Environmental Health Act, the counties, we contracted the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, and the county's environmental division participates in the pesticide inspection program. Each year, the division conducts inspections of landscapers who are found to be applying pesticides on residential and commercial properties in the county. These inspections ensure that landscapers are properly state-licensed and are also applying labeled and approved substances. Multifamily residences, such as apartment complexes, are also inspected to ensure that pesticide applications are conducted by licensed applicators, products are being properly stored, and residents notified of applications. Schools in the county are inspected to ensure that an integrated pest management program is always being implemented. Further, retail stores are also inspected to confirm that only EPA-registered pesticide products are being sold. This program is designed to reduce the number of illegal pesticides in the environment, thus protecting the health of our residents. From our environmental solid waste and recycling divisions, Friday, June tenth, the divisions will hold a paper shred event. This program will be held at Middlesex Borough's Municipal Complex, which is located at twelve hundred Mountain Avenue, from nine a.m. to noon or until the trucks are full. The following Saturday, on June eleventh, the divisions will conduct another paper shred event at Woodbridge's Public Works Complex, located at two two five Smith Street. Again, this event will be from nine a.m. to noon. Residents may bring free of charge all paper items for safe shredding and recycling, thus protecting one's personal information and identity. Please only include paper items, as metals and the like may disable the shredding devices. For additional information on these or any programs, kindly visit the county's website or call our divisions at seven three two, seven four five, four one seven zero. From the offices of the prosecutor and sheriff, on May twenty-fourth, these offices, in conjunction with the county's twenty-five towns, participated in a law enforcement recruitment program. This initiative was held at the county college and was well-attended by many residents interested in pursuing a career in law enforcement. Should anyone have any questions about law enforcement positions, residents may contact their respective police departments or the county's offices. And taking a point of privilege, since I'm chairing the meeting tonight, I just want to say a few additional words. The Down Below the Line event was amazing, and I really give credit to all our staff, especially the people who work at Replenish. It was a terrific event. For people who don't know, they challenged professional chefs working with teams from the different food pantries to create meals using only what comes through the pantries and try to see if they can create gourmet meals out of those foods. And they use it as an opportunity to raise funds, but it was a terrific event and also highlights a lot of the works of the food pantry. So I really want to give kudos to all of those people and encourage anyone listening to join us next year at the event. And I also want to mention the flag raising we just did on Wednesday and give appreciation to Commissioner Kenny, because he's in charge of our flag raising programs, and he and the staff worked very hard to put these together. And as was said at the program, in this county, we believe in the rights of all our residents to live their lives and love how they wish and be protected, just as any other resident would be. And so we were very, very happy to engage in that program. And finally, I want to mention that the county has a very big event coming up on the eleventh, and that is Celebrate Middlesex County. And I would encourage anybody here who's listening to go on the website and find out about the program, bring the family. It's an incredible family event. And all our different departments are there, and they would love to have a chance to talk to residents and let the residents know what the county can do for them in a myriad of different ways. So there's food vendors, there are all sorts of rides and children's activities. So the weather's supposed to be good, so we hope we see a very large crowd. So now, moving on, Mr. Kelso, do we have any resolutions to be added to tonight's agenda?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be amended?
There are none.
Resolutions to be held?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be avoided?
There are none.
All right, I'm now going to open public discussion on resolutions listed on this agenda only. Anyone who'd like to speak about a resolution, please step forward.
Hi, yes, Danielle Moore Somerset Street, actually, due to I don't have a pen today, I was running a little late. Let me see what number it was. That was where my question was with the Puerto Rican Action Board, like I said, forgive me, just where I, I just lost the page coming up here. But my concerns is where, like I said, the Puerto Rican Action Board leaving New Brunswick. And like I said, thank you. Like I said, I don't have a pen due to where I ran to an emergency coming, coming through here, so like I said, I wasn't prepared. But all right, thank you. With the Puerto Rican Action Board leaving New Brunswick, one thing that I would like for you to really take, and I surely would like to keep track of it, due to where with them moving to East Brunswick, was like I said, come on, that's a rich town. I don't feel that a lot of people, you don't have too many homeless people, low-income people in East Brunswick. And like I said, due to where the situation was, what a lot of people from New Brunswick and other towns should get in there. I want to see a record, a tracking with dates to see the same, if you understand what I'm trying to say, if the same amount of help is being helped out, sent here moving from New Brunswick, if you understand what I'm saying. I would like to keep on a record of how many people are they really helping, due to where, like I said, a lot of people were very angry that they moved from New Brunswick, due to where this is where that started at. And like I said, East Brunswick, come on. What, just because the head, the president, that's where he, that's where they knew that? That's a real reason why I say they moved. It had nothing to do with the income, where they couldn't pay the rent. Instead of lying to people, telling people, wow, they were the only one warned, went through the city council on May fifth of two thousand twenty-one, and still haven't been warned that all that could be knocked down from Jersey Avenue, where the only ones that was warned was the Puerto Rican Action Board. And like I said, very sad that the city didn't. I spoke on that council last night, but yes, I surely would like to see a record, you keeping a track of a record, are they still helping people in New Brunswick, due to where they said on Facebook, questioned, due to where a lot of people said, oh, I don't have transportation to get to East Brunswick, where they put a notifying on Facebook stating that, okay, they were going to do something on the computer where people don't have to worry about the transportation of helping people. But please, yes, I would like for you to keep track, because I'm surely going to keep track and see, due to, like I said, East Brunswick is not a place that really needs help, due to where that, come on, rich town. So I hope you look into it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Anyone else have any questions?
Four.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelso, are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda and voted separately? Are there any commissioners other than myself?
Yes.
All right, then, at this time, I have to, I ask to move two two seven seven four R and two two eight one eight voted on separately.
Deputy Director, a motion would then be in order to adopt the consent agenda consisting of resolution numbers twenty-two dash seven six five, the resolution twenty-two dash eight three one, excluding resolutions twenty-two seven seven four and twenty-two eight one eight, will be voted upon separately.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Roll call?
County Commissioner Escudero Barber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
County Commissioner Hopple?
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Deputy Director Nara?
Yes.
On the Deputy Director, it would be appropriate to consider the two resolutions which were excluded by you as Deputy Director, and that's resolution twenty-two dash seven seven four and twenty-two dash eight one eight.
Is there a motion?
Motion for adoption.
All those in favor, roll call vote.
County Commissioner Escudero Barber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
County Commissioner Hopple?
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Deputy Director Nara?
Present at abstaining. At this time, I'm going to open the meeting for public comment. I'd ask anyone who has public comment to approach the dais, and please state your name and address. And you have five minutes.
Hi, I'm Patricia Payne. I live in Milltown, New Jersey. I come here tonight as a faculty member at Middlesex College, and I think I may have mentioned last time I was here, I'm present on Local nineteen forty AFT, which is the union for full-time faculty. You know, as you know, on May twenty-fourth, a tragic mass murder took place at an elementary school in Uvalde, Texas. Twenty-one people died, two teachers, nineteen elementary school children. They died from wounds from an assault rifle, legally purchased by an eighteen-year-old, who was shot dead at the scene by a water patrol team. Stories emerging from that day are gut-wrenching. Something has to change in this country, and the citizenry is demanding it. And I call upon all public servants to take a stand, promote responsible gun legislation, and fight against the gun manufacturers and lobbyists that control Washington, D.C. State governments can make a real difference. I'm grateful to live in a state with stricter gun laws. But elections, as we know, can drastically change things. There was no mention in any college publication about these twenty-one murders at a school. Have educational leaders become that desensitized to school shootings? Or is this just yet another example of some disconnect in our college? I think it is. I'm a teacher on an open campus. I feel kinship with all teachers and all students when a tragedy like this occurs. Our college administrators, do they not feel the same kinship? I don't think they do. We are also in kinship with you, the Democratic County Commissioner Board, that we as teachers, counselors, librarians, union members, and students, we voted for you. We depend on you for a response and action, and that's why we voted for you. We were here in April last time, and since then, there has been no progress towards the contract settlement. Although we have been fending off management's most recent attack on our severance program, the same program that management retains for administrators, that they pay their retiring administrators while asserting that it's illegal language in our contract. Management is indeed desensitized to fairness and equity. They are not advocates of good and sound educational policy. Their commitment is a facade, a picture book of stories, neglecting any real attempts at transparency and resolution of issues. The college president emailed me at the beginning of May for a meeting, of course, with conditions attached. I replied, "Over two and a half weeks ago," and have heard nothing further, replied with a willingness to meet, of course. One of the conditions was not to talk about negotiations. If we don't talk about the issues, if we don't sit down at the table and work together, we will never move the institution forward. Has our administration also become desensitized to the lack of enrollment? Our student enrollment has been in decline since two thousand thirteen. That's a fact. Our full-time faculty has also been in a steep decline. There is a direct correlation, and that's a fact, too. The less value you give to teaching and learning, the less students you have. That's a fact. The current administrative staff has been serving the institution in some capacity and some job since that enrollment started to decline, and then they continue to serve. One of the questions that I wanted to ask you today, as a board, as county commissioners, what do you think can be done about the enrollment issue? We've made suggestions. There's no enrollment plan. We have a problem. And I would love to hear your ideas. My last point, we have an organizational issue at our college. The pandemic alone did not cause the low morale and the disconnect. Today's workers are reevaluating their workplaces and calling out poor working conditions. I'm going to leave you with a May twenty-seventh article on Chronicle of Higher Education, and it talks about this lack of organizational plan at many colleges, and ours is one of those. And I'm going to also leave you with the faculty unanimous vote of no confidence in the college administration. And I think you'll find it very interesting reading to read those two documents side by side. We're open. We're open to any ideas that you might have, right? And we haven't got a lot of response from you.
Time's up.
You know, so we are open to hearing from you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can leave those to your staff.
Good evening. My name is Shima Majui, April Somerset, New Jersey. I'm not going to go over the same issues that I went over last time. I think we spent quite a bit of time on April twenty-first going over the issues that we've had, but I did want to share with you what's occurred since then. I and the union have made, the AFT Local nineteen forty at Middlesex College have made many attempts to contact the commissioners to kind of get, you know, your read on what you thought about some of the things that we've said. We've also, as Pat mentioned, received an email from Mark McCormick asking for a meeting. The subject line said, "Time to meet." And so we said, okay, let's meet. It's been two and a half weeks we haven't heard back from him. We're very clear with the commissioners and the county administrator that it's not a communication issue, it's an issue of leadership. And so we're asking you to help us in that cause. And that was your last time I said, "We're all with this together." And I mean that, because I know I've seen some of you at graduation. It was wonderful to see those of you who attended watch our graduates walk across the stage. We have two of our graduates here today who are wanting to speak to you about the impact that faculty and the institution had on their lives. The two questions I have, and they come from my colleagues who've reached out to me. One is, we've made many attempts to email the commissioners and haven't heard anything back. What is the best way of communicating and to ensure that we would get a reply back?
I have to say this, and I know the director said this previously. Part of the problem here is, is that we are constrained from engaging, because this is labor management. And I understand as the community college and Riddick County Commissioner, that there are some very real and strict, you know, constraints on us, as I said before, about engaging while there are labor negotiations going on. So that is probably what you have not received, you know, comments from the commissioners back. And it can be frustrating, but it's just how weak our, you know, our force of function on this issue.
Okay, thank you. But I just want to be clear, my emails to the commissioners had nothing to do with negotiations. I'm very clear with drawing that line, because I know that we have to be appropriate, boundaries are very important. The emails were strictly about the leadership of the institution and how you can help. So I wanted to just be clear about that. And so we will continue reaching out, and if we have to continue coming to these meetings, we enjoy seeing you. The second question was, our colleagues asked what the commissioner's response was to some of our concerns that we brought to your attention last time.
I'm going to say again that we're not going to engage publicly, but I think that we've all been listening very attentively, okay? And we hear your concerns, we hear the passion, and we understand. And we hear your concerns, we hear the passion, and we understand the passion. And we are just going to have to maintain a certain level of neutrality right now while, and I understand you all are trying to make it clear that this is not an engagement of negotiations or asking us to interfere in the negotiations. But while the negotiations are going on, there are a lot of, there's a lot of contact that can be viewed in a negative or detrimental way. So we're just trying to be very careful here. But we do hear you, and we are concerned in a lot of different levels, that's all I can say.
I appreciate that. That is something that our folks are looking, waiting to hear from the commissioners. The other issue was, we have had multiple contract violations, just wanted to put that on the record, that we have run up on grievances. Has nothing to do with negotiation, it's pure contract violations at the hand of our administration, at the hands of our president. We can share our grievances that were filed, and some are at a point where they will go to arbitration. So in the case that, at least, we do feel very confident that we would win. So everything that we are stating, and I've said before, we have backed up with evidence and we have backed up with email exchanges. So anything that we bring to your attention, we're not just pulling out of thin air. The other thing I did want to say, I wanted to thank the two or three county commissioners that did come to graduation. It was wonderful to see you all there and clapping for our students. Two of them are here, and they're going to share their experience. One is Thomas Emmons, and the other is Devin who spoke last time. I'm going to introduce Thomas, you may have heard his name. He was our Jack Hancock Scholarship winner. Just to give you a background, you have almost a seven percent chance of winning that scholarship. It is the largest scholarship in the country, and Thomas is our fifth overall winner since I've started working at the college. And on the same day that Thomas won the scholarship, he received wonderful news that he was accepted into Princeton University. Commissioners, you may be aware of him, he's running for office. That's my time. So without any further ado, I would like to introduce to you Thomas Emmons.
Thank you.
My name is Thomas Emmons, I'm from Jamesburg, New Jersey, and I wanted to come here today just to share a little bit about how Middlesex College has been a part of my success story. I've been a lifelong Middlesex County resident, now we've approached my county's old public office, and I'm an MCDO endorsed council candidate in Jamesburg this year. And I wanted to personally share my experience of how the faculty of this room has made a huge difference in my life, and that of countless others. They make success stories like mine possible. And I feel what gets lost in this conversation about contract negotiations and corruption and everything else that goes on is just how much, just how much the faculty genuinely cares about the students of our county. Case in point, when I went to Middlesex College, when I started there, it was the peak of the pandemic, but even during remote learning, I was never alone. My professors, my counselors always made sure I had everything I needed to be prepared for my next test, my next essay for life beyond Middlesex, even during the toughest days, and we all know how difficult Zoom is to work sometimes. They showed up, they gave it their all, and that was the same for nearly every other student, every other student I've met. And I think it's worth noting, these are people that have chosen Middlesex College. They don't have to work at Middlesex College. They've chosen Middlesex College and Middlesex County because they believe in their mission. But most importantly, as I learned, as I saw firsthand, they believe in the students of Middlesex County. And that's the kind of dedicated staff you really want at a place like Middlesex College. It's all about lifting people up, giving people a chance, putting students on a path to succeed. And at the end of the day, college is about education, and the folks you have heard from last month, and you'll hear from again tonight, are on the front lines making a quality education in Middlesex County possible. And on the best days and the not-so-best days, too. What I worry about is success stories like mine not being possible in the future because after getting the short end of the stick for so long, you can't be surprised when people retire, when they seek employment elsewhere, when they're under working conditions. Low morale affects the quality of education, and that's all the expense of students like myself. You cannot have a quality education in the county, and you cannot have a successful student body without faculty that have everything they need to succeed. And I look at this as a student, but I also can look at it from, say, the board of trustees' perspective, maybe from your perspective as well. Even as a little library trustee, I know that it's next to impossible to make everybody happy, especially when it comes to personnel. You think teachers are bad? I've tried librarians that have been around and working longer than you've been alive. That's tough, that's tough to work with. But communication and listening and working together, working together, I heard that phrase somewhere before, goes a long way. That's something that's completely absent in the leadership of the big shots at Chambers Hall. And what I'd like to say to everyone here today, particularly the college administration, is don't think about the kind of politician you want to be. I know there's a little bit of audacity in this coming from a 20-year-old, but don't think about the politician you want to be. Think about the leader you want to be, the kind of person you want to be remembered as. Why have you gotten involved with public service in the first place? You know, there's a lot going on, really complicated, fast-moving issues with a lot of complicated parts, but there are, some of them are no brainers, and this is one of those things. If you invest in the faculty, you invest in the students. If you throw your full support, not just lip service, but full support behind the faculty, you will see returns on that investment like you wouldn't believe. You will hear from more generations of people that say, "Middlesex College, Middlesex County is a college of excellence." So take action, take action in supporting those who are making the job happen for that mission to come alive. To the professors that have mentored me, to the counselors that have guided me, and everyone in between, I thank you from the bottom of my heart. And I've had great good fortune to get to know some of you as well, and I know that you believe in the faculty as well and the mission of the college. And it's one of the reasons why I'm proud to be on that MCDO line this year, where we stick up for the little god, at least we should. And if there's anything to be proud of in this county, it's people like this, people who make the county a place that you want to live and call home, that make it a place where you can proudly say, "I live in Middlesex County." And they deserve our respect, they deserve our gratitude and our full support. I think so, we always had that for me, and I hope you feel the same way, too. Thank you for listening.
Hi, Donovan Dixon, Somerset. I just want to, I bounce off of what Thomas said, that, you know, it's, this is not really a political issue, it's not an issue to remain neutral on, like you said. It's a, it's a business of what is right and what is wrong. And I think, I don't mean to bring any examples that we can all recall or think of examples where those historically that have remained neutral have only helped and supported the wrongdoers. And I just want to say, like, I know, I understand, you know, you have many constraints, and you have many ties that don't allow you to do as much as you need to do or say you want to do. But I believe that it will go a long way, that just saying that you do support unequivocally the staff and faculty at Middlesex County College, that it will go a long way in ending these negotiation battles and the back and forth between the staff and administration. As a student, I at Middlesex, I can say that the faculty there have supported me tremendously and have guided me and many students that you, I mean, I didn't intend graduation, but the ones that she saw at graduation, those of you that were there. And that was only because, that wasn't because of administration, that was because of the hard work and the dedication of the staff and faculty, that they break in their backs every single day to make sure that those students walk across the stage and that those students will go on to live better lives and to do better things, just like, just like you, and maybe, you know, sit in those same seats that you sit in now, or sit in the seats that administration sits. And like, I would go, like, where you said, that Middlesex is going to be the location of where the career, festival, career day takes place, and that, you know, it was also a place where the free COVID testing was done, and then that's because Middlesex County College is the bedrock and foundation of Middlesex County. And it is the faculty and the teachers and the professors there that are the bedrock of Middlesex County College. And it is only with your support that they will be able to, and it's, I'm asking you to just do them justice. I'm asking you to support them in your full capacity to, so that they can be done justice and to not, because they have been denied justice for, since 2013, and are continually denied and denied and denied. And it's you and only you who can finally give them that restitution, finally give them what they deserve, that honor, especially, as you said, with the Middlesex Day coming up. Who better to honor on Middlesex Day than the people that made Middlesex work, you know, that made Middlesex great? Thank you.
Good evening. Keith Bossler, instructor of mathematics, Middlesex College from Jackson, New Jersey. I want to start by telling you all a story about an election from the days of yore, the 1920 Republican presidential primary election. During the party convention in Chicago at the culmination of this election, balloting was fierce, with candidates Leonard Wood, Major General from the Army, Frank Laudin, Governor of Illinois, and Hyren Johnson, Senator from California, all presented as favorites to win the nomination. Despite their status as favorites, neither candidate received the necessary delegates to secure this nomination. After four ballots, voting stopped on the first night and continued the next day. This was a time when the GOP had both a progressive wing and a conservative wing, and each wing had issues with the leading candidates. Party bosses were worried about finding a candidate to appease both wings of the party, and they came up with Lauren Harding, a senator from Ohio, after being allegedly lobbied by Harding's campaign manager in a suite which was said to be filled with the haze of cigar smoke. By the time the 10th balloting session was completed, Harding had secured the nomination despite poor performance in prior balloting, and it is said that the decision for Harding's nod was made in that smoke-filled back room in Chicago. I tell this story because the events at the convention in 1920 eventually led to a reform in the GOP's primary election system to take influence away from party bosses, which in turn led to more transparency in the election process. Transparency is a feature at Middlesex College that seems to be lacking these days. A little long trip for a short drink of water. During the campaign for the college presidency, Dr. McCormick promised greater transparency and open communication with the college community. Despite this, it has been more than two years since he last spoke to faculty in a live setting, instead preferring to pre-record messages for the college like the Wizard of Oz behind the curtain. Speaking of which, nobody gets in to see the wizard, not nobody, not know how. You can't even access the leadership suite in Chambers Hall without being buzzed in by the gatekeeper. This hardly says to the college community that Dr. McCormick wants an open line of communication with us. A lack of communication is a failure in leadership and creates opacity in a publicly operated institution. And what of our board of trustees? Now, there is a great example of the metaphorical smoke-filled back room. Members of the college community have no means to directly communicate with a member of the board. Our only options are to write an email to the board secretary stating our questions, to which we rarely get responses, or register to speak at a board meeting in which we get a mere three minutes to address the board, to which we would not receive a response to a question that is asked. Are the appointees of the Middlesex College Board of Trustees, public servants, acting in the greater good of the college on behalf of the county? Or are they political henchmen looking to advance their own standing in their political circles? Many of us choose to believe the latter because the votes on policy issues never seem to warrant discussion at public meetings. Decisions on such policies seem to be made before public meetings take place. This body here takes public comment on specific categories of policy proposals before voting on such measures. Perhaps it is time for the college board of trustees to learn a lesson from this. Perception is everything in the political arena. So either faculty believe that perception can be improved if we could just have better access to our board, or even better, perception could be improved if a member of the Middlesex College faculty residing within this county could serve on our board of trustees. So with that, I have two questions that I would like to ask you. How can the college community have better access to its board of trustees?
I don't have an answer for you. I don't have an answer for you.
That's, that's fine.
I'm going to say we'll, we'll look into it.
Okay. And will this body consider appointing a faculty member of Middlesex College who resides in this county to sit on the board of trustees and if not, why?
I can't answer that right now.
Okay, that's fair enough. Just, I want to close by appealing to your better angels to direct your board of trustees to work with their labor attorney to reach a fair and equitable settlement, not just for us, but also for the local ASME union who is also yet to settle. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Chuck Dolan, I'm a librarian at Middlesex College, a resident of South Brunswick. I spoke to you at the April meeting about the contract negotiations, but specifically about the amount of money that, amount of taxpayer money that the college administration is spending on the outside law firm that is representing it at the table. That law firm was hired to negotiate four outstanding contracts, and after two years, only two of those have been settled. The largest two, AFT and ASME, are still outstanding. That's not a stellar track record for effectiveness. At its April meeting, the college's board of trustees paid that law firm, the Wiener Law Group, $28,237 just for that month. That brings the grand total spent on fees to that law firm from the start of negotiations in 2020 through April of 2022 to $328,861. You can be sure that there was another big payment at the May meeting, but of course, we won't know what that was until the minutes are released. At the April, also at their April meeting, the board of trustees authorized an additional $75,000 in future spending. That's on top of the $75,000 that they authorized just the previous month that I mentioned last time I spoke to you. So they didn't think that that initial $75,000 was even going to be enough to last for the next few months, and had to double it immediately. What does that say about the college's commitment to settling anytime soon? The longer this goes, the more money gets funneled out of the college directly to this law firm, which is, by the way, located outside the county. It is in the direct financial interest of this law firm to extend the process for as long as possible to rack up as many billable hours as it can. It has no interest in reaching a settlement, no interest in the college's mission or students. All told, the board of trustees has already authorized spending a total of close to $450,000 just with this law firm, and they keep raising the limit. The county taxpayers and students are paying these bills. With two contracts still in limbo, morale in the dumps, and the atmosphere on campus poisoned by the idea that the college would be willing to spend nearly half a million dollars to fight its own employees instead of investing in them, I would like to ask you, has the college gotten its money's worth from this law firm? Do you feel that this is a responsible use of taxpayer money?
I have to say this, okay? There's some of these questions you're asking us, we don't have the specifics, so I can't, no one on this board could give you an answer right now to this question.
Fair enough, fair enough. It just doesn't make sense for the college to continue on its current path with this spending. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Great, Sima, Lavalet, New Jersey. I just want to thank you all for listening. You don't know how hard it is to get up and be heard just by a group of people who are listening to us. It's fantastic. Do I have to thank you for that? I want to add something to the update Shima and Pat made at the beginning. Last month, we had a really successful informational picket that we staged outside, in and around Chambers Hall. As my colleague said, the gates are closed in the merry old land of Oz. But we got right up there and we staged a really effective, I think, informational picket that was really well-attended, not only by members of the AFT, but by members of the community, by students, whose presence is always really, really gratifying to us as instructors, and also from our part-timers. I'm here to speak about the part-timers as I did last time. In my previous remarks, I called our adjunct faculty a talented, innovative-
"a talented, innovative cross-section of teachers who are forced to rely on low-wage employment with little to no job security." My point was to demonstrate how Middlesex College's over-reliance on part-time labor, not only with teachers, only contributes to a cycle of poverty in this county. Since our last meeting, I found an opportunity to confer with the adjuncts I work with personally, and they've asked me to relay the following concerns. One adjunct professor writes that she and many of her colleagues end up being career adjuncts, not because they want to, but because they are, or because they're unqualified for positions, but because the positions don't exist. Over the last decade, her department has lost 18 full-time instructors, and they've replaced five. That leaves a deficit of 13. The department, as you can imagine, while it's short on full-time labor, benefits from adjunct labor. Adjuncts sit on committees, they unofficially advise students, they help to build programs, and they get, in this teacher's words, "upgists" because more money isn't allocated to academics. She asks, "How do you do that to people who have helped to build this institution?" That's a rhetorical question. You don't have to. Another writes, "The biggest issue is job insecurity, not to mention lost wages and teaching opportunities." She writes that her income has decreased more than 85%, not since the beginning of the pandemic, but since its unofficial end, when our school insisted that adjuncts return to normal. That's when they started to lose money. On behalf of those part-timers who have health issues, autoimmune disorders, or care for at-risk family members, she reminds us that adjuncts are given little choice in their course assignments, and some could not teach in person. Increasingly, schools rely on adjunct labor but too little to protect this vulnerable population of workers. She writes, "I know there are many others like myself who are fearful of speaking out and placing themselves at risk." There are many more messages like these. They discuss low wages, the dreadful not knowing if they'll have a job next year, rising gas prices, inflation, no healthcare. They ask how their institution can afford to spend hundreds of thousands on attorney fees out of county, but can't find two nickels to rub together for its workers. They point out that 35 faculty members have retired in the last three years, most at the top of their pay scale. I'm no math professor, but this should translate to a savings of about $5 million from debts and retirements. Why they ask is Middlesex can tend to rely on part-timers. Why not lead the charge in working for the recommended 75-25 split of full-timers to adjuncts? Why not protect our part-time workers by opening more tenure-track lines and giving them a path to employment with dignity? There are also messages from students and members of the community that come to us through our emails and our social media accounts. They take a certain protective stance when they see their teachers exploited. I will share those when we come back in July, and August, and September, and every month until this contract is settled. Thank you very much.
Please, teacher, meet and ask.
Hi, Richard Thompson, Town Park. I teach at Middlesex College. I was just planning to be here to support my colleagues. But I also heard on the radio recently the governor talking about having a $9.8 billion surplus. If that is true, I would like to ask you to make the governor aware that the faculty in this state are being asked to take the equivalent of a large pay cut while the state enjoys a huge surplus. That's a question for primaries. Thank you.
Hello, Professor Jerry Olson, English Department, Middlesex College, a resident of Cold Snack. My colleagues like to ask difficult questions. They're very good at that. I'm gonna ask some of the simple ones. The first one is about the college's name change, which in 2021, you may remember, Dr. McCormick told us, all right, the name didn't really change, the word "county" was being taken out of the name. I want to know why Middlesex is only one of two colleges, two-year colleges in the state, plus through the other one. They have a direct partnership with Rowan. Why we are the only college without the county in there?
I don't have an answer for you. We were part of that decision.
Okay. It wasn't the county's decision? We were told it was.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Don't be sorry.
Director, I'm Deputy Director, real quick. First of all, I know it's still the teachers, professors. If students in your classroom, and, and could we stop his time for a second? So don't, we, just, just for, I don't want to, I'm trying to get you off the time. If the student senior classroom were yelling out, "Go to class", would you say something, or would you ask them to have some decorum? Or in the class, so please, yeps and yeps and everything. As far as that goes, we can get a better answer?
Okay.
For you, it, it's part of the, just the rebranding of the county and everything that we're trying to do to, to raise the image and attract businesses and people who live here and everything. So if, if we could get back to you on that one?
Do you, are you, are you called the Middlesex Board of Commissioners then?
Uh, no, the county's the county.
Thank you.
And we can get you the info on.
Okay, the county's the county, but I guess my question is, why isn't the county college the county college? If you can't give me an answer, that's good. Next question, why wasn't anybody asked? How many residents weren't asked, the faculty, the staff weren't asked? Can you, give me an answer to that?
What, what I think Commissioner Kenny is saying is, is that you have a list of these questions, right? We'll be happy to see what answers we can get. Okay, because those particular kinds of questions, I don't think have anything to do with the negotiations. So to the extent that you have questions like that, we will look into it and see what answers you can come back with.
Another question is, is about monies that were spent in the rebranding. The half a million dollars, which would have covered, all right, a more than, more than enough to cover an inflation-based goal rate to us who've been working for over two years without a contract. I, I know that there is a nationwide decline in community college enrollment. One of the reasons we were given to rebrand the name of the college was to increase enrollment. That hasn't happened. So my question is, do you think this was a prudent decision to change the name and spend the kind of money that you did?
Once again, I can't tell you without having more information about all the different reasons that the admissions have declined.
Great, okay. Let me move to 2021. The college was awarded $3 million by the state in the first round of funding of a bond act to improve and expand CDE programs, right? Which included to refurbish and expand existing buildings, all right? When we were here in April, this board awarded additional funds for that, okay? To date, there have been no specific plans announced with that money. So my question is, is A, does the county or the college have plans to house new and existing boat tech programs on the college grounds?
I'll look into the answer for that.
My next question is, does the county or the college plan to offer student housing on the college grounds?
I, I don't know.
My last question is related to the very unfortunate, horrible mass shootings, all right? I work on a campus that has unlimited access to college building and grounds. What plans do you have to ensure the safety of students, faculty, and staff, and more important, the children who attend our summer camps and our childcare facilities?
That I can get, gather information because we are very careful in the county to provide resources for our boat tech schools, all the schools in the county who, who seek advice and support from the county. So I can make some inquiries about that. I absolutely understand everyone's concerns here. And to the extent that we have information that we can provide you, I will make sure that we do so.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Dr. Blanco, Hays, New Jersey. I have a very simple question to all of you, especially Commissioner Kenny, Commissioner Asco, and Peter. Do you believe, do you support, are you still Democrats, support unions? This is a very simple question. It's a yes or no. Do you support unions as Democrats? Can you support unions?
That, that is a political question?
It is not a political question.
No, it is. It is. He said it's, as Democrats, do you support unions? So if you want, I'll, I'll talk to you afterwards, you know, but I'm not gonna answer that.
Well, forget about the word "Democrat". I responded from my question just simply, do you, as commissioners, believe and support unions? We need to know. I will tell you why we need to know. We have about 20,000 people in our social media that follow us. And they ask me, they want to know before this coming election, next week, and before the elections in November. I don't know what to tell. This is mostly my or our former students. I don't know what to answer. Should I tell them that I asked the honorable commissioners, and they told me that they could not answer? What should I tell them?
You should, I'm gonna direct that because you should ask us separately from when we're sitting on this dais. Because when we're here and conducting these meetings, we are equalitable. We are serving as commissioners. We are not, we are not identifying as Democrats or otherwise. So we're not gonna ask, we're not gonna answer political stance questions here. You are absolutely free to approach us when you're off the dais, and we will give you an answer that you may or may not choose to share with your students or your community. But those are not questions we're gonna answer here on this dais during these meetings.
All right, so I, it's on record. I will say, I will tell the 20,000-some followers that I asked a question as I wanted to the commissioners before the elections. And I was told the answer was, they do not want to answer publicly at the present time, to see them individually. Is that correct? Can we actually say that?
The correct answer is, we will not answer political questions about political positions while we are conducting a county commissioner meeting. But anyone is free to approach us at any other time when we're not conducting an open public meeting.
You feel that this is a political question? If I asked you, for example, do you support education? Would you say yes or no?
All right. Bottom line is, I understand where this is going. We're all intelligent people here in this room. I've said what I've said. I think most of us have given our positions in other situations, certainly in political situations. And I think that that is as far as we're gonna go right now.
So you also would not ask whether you are in favor of education or not?
I'm not gonna engage in the back and forth on these issues. If you have specific issues you want to inform us about or address, that's fine. But this part, Amy, I hope that at this point, we are back on the box because I don't really want to engage in this kind of back and forth with my fellow commissioners. If the director was here, he would say the same thing.
I've been supporting these commissioners from the very beginning for many years. So, you know, I feel very proud of it. And I want to continue to be proud that I keep supporting Commissioner Kenny, Commissioner Asco, and Peter, and so on, whom I know personally. So thank you for my very time, and I regret that you were unable to answer it. Sorry.
Hi, I'm Stephen Barnhart, professor of psychology. And I want to thank you for letting me address you tonight. I'm sure that you were all as impressed as I was last month with the comments of our students, and again, tonight, and of our professors. Now, our students, I'm thinking of the philosophy student, just the, the strength and the generosity of his ideas, if you remember. And the, the research scientist who said, she just was admitted to a doctoral program, and she said that she learned the bulk of her foundational knowledge in science from professors in Middlesex. And I love the honesty of the social worker who said that she thought with her expertise in her field and with her advanced degree, that she could make a good professor. So she tried to be an adjunct. And she found out it took much more than expertise in your field. It took expertise in teaching methods. It took that spark. And so humbly and beautifully, she said, "Well, I didn't have it, but my professors in Middlesex, they did." And our professors, I was struck listening to them last time, just the, the clarity and power of a strong mind that's been trained to reason well. These are the minds that we as a college need because we are facing some significant challenges. As Professor Blanco said last month, we need to learn to adapt as a college, and we need to lead again. We've been such strong leaders in the state and always have been, and we need to get in that position again. Just like Professor Blanco, he and I both spent time as chair of decent-sized departments, I've had the chance to observe our faculty in the classroom, in their apartment, also in their offices working with students. And it's a remarkable faculty that we have. They're the ones who are creating the teaching strategies that take into account the emerging understanding, the new fresh understandings of research on human cognition, learning, and development. These are the faculty who are integrating technologies so that we can send our classrooms into the world and the world into our classroom in a way that's relevant. It's a remarkable core that we have. Now, my children are grown. I can spend my nights reading all the research, and I'd love to do it. I'm thinking about, how am I gonna get this into my class tomorrow? And how am I gonna bring it alive, help my students to learn? But when I look at this young faculty with, with young families of their own and, and that same commitment, they are pouring their lives out for our students. It's who we are, you know, a core to our identity is our teaching. And it gives such, such a meaning and purpose to our lives. And we get to be there at a time, Israel is a rare thing, that we get to, to observe and be part of it. Many people just will never have this chance. When we see a live mind, you just kind of catch fire. And then, you know, over the months, working with them and fostering, nourishing them, and then, you know, discipline comes in, and they become an intellect, an emerging intellect. We are darkening the sky with arrows, arrows like these, these arrows. And it's a legacy. These students are a legacy. You're all leaders. I know that you realize one of the most effective works of a leader is to inspire their team and to get the alpha flag out of the way so the team can innovate, the team can create new ideas, the team can create new strategies. Wouldn't it be wonderful to foster that view of the Middlesex faculty as a resource? And I'm asking you to support in a concrete way our faculty. You know, during this pandemic, we had made many sacrifices. They were hard, but they were our privilege. They were our honor. You'll never get a complaint. We would, we love our students. We are, but this is the way we are. This is who we are. So of course, I hope you'll support the idea of, at least in terms of wages, at least give us a living wage, keep up with the cost of living. Support that idea, of course, but more than that, or equal to that, is to foster this idea of the faculty as a resource and a vehicle for change. Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening, commissioners. My name is Alexandria Harris. I live in Sarahville, and during the academic year, I rent in New Brunswick. So this is my second home. I just wanted to raise awareness on several issues. One was the new location for the Public Puerto Rican Action Board. I wanted to comment, but that motion to end the public comment on that agenda item was kind of silent really quick. But I just want to raise awareness that East Brunswick is a blue-ribbon municipality, and New Brunswick is a Title I-funded municipality. And so access for low-income families without a vehicle, the closest you could get probably is the 18 bus line that runs along New Jersey Route 18. I take that frequently. But the limitations is very limited, like there's not a lot of public transit. So how accessible is this new location? Rhetorical question. It leads me to my next point about public transit in the state of New Jersey, specifically in Middlesex County. We are a political powerhouse. If you are not familiar with- If you are not familiar with that, well, there it is. We are a political powerhouse. We are a very densely populated county. So I wanted to raise awareness and ask the question, which I would like an answer. I also wanted to point out the enthusiasm of looking into the safety for students on campuses versus like all the other questions that people have before me posed. So why has the county shut a line been discontinued? Well, not that. Why hasn't it been brought back?
Deputy Commissioner, if I may, after we experienced the, I guess, impacts of the pandemic, we recognized safety was an issue. And we took advantage of federal funding and state funding to reimagine what the lines should offer us. And we're in the process of strategically developing a forward-together plan for our 2014 program. And we're going to rethink what the man and what our services can offer.
So it is coming back?
Some version of.
Some version. So do you have any idea if there would be less lines? Would there be more timetables? Because it's pretty inconvenient. It's a very long route with very infrequent routes. Mind you, also, the state lines run once an hour. And somebody who works and goes to school and has a social life, as everyone else in this room who has taken public transit, it's very inconvenient.
So you may be saying about your trade lines as well?
Yes, and also the county lines.
So we're doing the analysis based on the data and the demand to try to figure that out.
With our G I S?
That's a tool that we're considering.
Okay.
But we're in the analysis stage, looking at all the data. And we're about two months out from that.
Okay, great. We had answered about reestablishing the lines.
Some version of the line, yes.
Okay, but the lines won't be brought back in two months is an answer about the status of them?
We're not sure yet. That's what I can give you at this time.
Okay. Thank you for answering that. I'm sorry, what was your name again?
Solomon Pabst.
Solomon? Cool, all right. Thank you for that. Also, just wanted to raise awareness just in accessibility, also with affordable housing. You know, like, county can do some things about affordable housing here in New Brunswick. Most likely will be another high-rise, high-end apartment building. But I see a lack of cooperative apartment owning. You know, the county does have that opportunity to do that. We have a surplus of nine-something billion dollars. We could do that. Just wanted to say that again, especially for single households. You know, there's just a lot of need that hasn't been met. Also, I wanted to raise awareness for this poster that I think matches my eyes pretty well. So this is about the gas plant in Kearney in Woodbridge. I just wanted to say that we don't need another plant. I live on Spotify and I don't have the premium account. So I always hear these ads, especially the one about New Jersey going renewables and how there are these programs, these rebate programs for commercial use, for residential use, for private use, that they could save money and do by the climate change if they go renewable. Yet, we see a gas plant proposal being brought up in Woodbridge. You know, maybe you may not have the jurisdiction to slash it down, as you may love it. But I study environmental policy. So I understand and study the relationships of power. So you could support against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address. You have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Suraj Gandhi. I'm from Monroe Township. Yes.
Yes, just so you understand the video, playing the video is including your five minutes.
Yes. Today, I'm here to talk to you about the animals at Thompson Park. I've heard and seen the injustices that the Johnson Park animals have and are still facing. Yet, under that same management, why would Thompson Park be any different? A little background about myself. I started a campaign three years ago when I was in seventh grade to improve the animals' living conditions. I sent a letter to Mr. Lear. And after two years of getting no response, I sent more emails to him and the mayor. I started a change.org petition. I spoke in classrooms and in school clubs. I even partnered with the In Defense of Animals International Advocacy Organization. So so far, the county has had tens of news reports, sanctuaries pouring in their support, Facebook posts of outrage, not to mention my own 1,000 signature petition. But what do we still not have? Larger enclosures, improved flooring, better care, open space. These animals don't have the resources they need to live just last. And now I'd like to direct you to the screen for video of the hog's at the park. So Deputy Director, what do you see in this video? Do you see an unhealthy, limping hog struggling to get to its food?
May I ask you a question? Why did you take this video?
Three weeks ago.
So I'll inquire, we'll inquire about this animal because I was unclear because I don't know if this is one of the particular animals that we are having, you know, transferred to either another facility or not. So I will inquire.
Okay. And do you believe that it's the county's care or lack thereof that is led to support physical condition?
I don't know. I wouldn't be able to give you that answer. I don't know what the cause of that animal's condition is. I don't know whether the animal came to us already because we are taking these animals in. They were given to us or brought to us because they can't be cared for where they were before. So I can't give you those answers without any specifics about the animals.
Okay. Thank you. And I just wanted to say that if this hog is in this condition, why isn't it a rhetorical question? Why isn't it in a facility where it can get the medical attention that it needs for its legs and for its body? The simple fact remains that these animals, especially this hog, need immediate medical attention by an independent professional veterinarian. And then, the park also has peacocks. Their cage is barely larger than the distance from the end of their feathers to their head. And you can't find an animal that travels miles, even in captivity, to a space with room for only a few steps. In the winter, when I went, it was 36 degrees and they had their heads buried in their feathers. And when I contacted Mr. Lear about maybe putting in some heating purchase, by no surprise, was I left unacknowledged. We need to understand that these species are not native dangers and they require more than the bare minimum to thrive. I believe that the hogs, peacocks, and emu need to be moved to sanctuaries, while the other animals' enclosures must be vastly improved. This would allow Thompson Park's animal haven to be an exciting job for families and their children while also providing animals with a comfortable home. I understand that you're working on it, but when will we see effective change? When will these animals get the lives they truly deserve? It's easy to stand on one side of the fence and think, oh, how great of a life these animals are living. But it takes true selflessness to admit the reality that they're facing. In a few weeks, the In Defense of Animals organization and I will be publishing our national media alert. So I hope we can all become those selfless individuals before it's too late. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Linda Sorka from New Brunswick. And I would also like to speak against the approval of this new power plant. I understand that you can't directly approve it or not approve it. But several of the municipalities already have come out and made statements against it. And I think it will be appropriate also at the county level to do that because it is now before the state. So Woodbridge itself didn't have any problem with it for whatever reason, because they're right there too. But, you know, Highland Park, birthday, and other towns that are in the range of all these horrible pollutants that are going on spilling out. Two million, 374,632.8 tons of greenhouse gases. And then there's a whole list here. I'm not going to read how many tons of nitrous, carbon monoxide, particulate matter. And the particulate matter, that is something I have seen over the effects of that, over my decades of teaching school. It used to be unusual for school-aged children to have asthma. Maybe one kid in a class, and not to kind of ask for where they would miss school or hospitalized. That has changed. It's changed around here, anyway. But I taught in New Brunswick for over 30 years. And I definitely saw the change. And well, my friend who's a school nurse, she really dealt with the change. The asthma is rampant. And that's thanks to that particulate matter. There's six power plants already in this county. Just the other twin of the company that wants to do this one, which by the way, is no longer even a New Jersey company. It's a foreign, home, private company. So while P S E and G is going away from fossil fuels, while the state has come out with a plan to be completely renewable by 2050, it makes no sense at all to approve a new gas power plant. Just the sister plant that is, will be put next to, already makes enough power for the county, for our county, two times over. And there's five other plants. And this one would make six. It's just, it's all for profits of this questionable company. If you look into their history, you know, one of the officers of the company actually wound up in prison for, you know, bribing people to make certain decisions in their favor. And, you know, I just think it's time to prioritize our health. We're the people that have to breathe this. And especially our kids. It's just unconscionable that we would, you know, consider letting this company come in and enrich themselves, selling power to other places we don't even need it, at the expense of our children. That's not acceptable to me. And these plants have been stopped in other places in our state when enough of the local councils and environmental commissions and different people locally spoke out against it. So I think it would be great timing now while the Department of Environmental Protection has to make this plan. If our county, as a county, stood up and said, oh, this is an environmental justice issue. It is just not fair.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Amber Saravia. I'm from Cleveland, New Jersey. I also am here to talk about the gas plant that is proposed in Woodbridge. There is supposed to be about over 2 million tons of greenhouse gases that will impact the community of Woodbridge, but also the surrounding communities. As stated by the new environmental justice law, these communities are overburdened, which basically means that they are disproportionately affected by environmental pollution. And, you know, a lot of these communities are minorities, low-income communities. And so with this gas plant, it's going to be pushed down just like before. And we really need to take a stand on this issue. I know you guys can't take a direct stand, but as mentioned earlier, you know, there are other cities and towns, you know, across the county that have put a stand against it. At least I want you guys to know the issue and to think about the effects that it will have on Woodbridge and the surrounding towns. Also, as mentioned earlier, you know, the company that is in charge of this proposal has a background of corruption with money laundering and so forth. And so we need to really make sure that, you know, the companies and the organizations that come into our communities have, you know, direct support and respect for Woodbridge and the surrounding cities. Actually, there is one gas plant that has been established within the community of Woodbridge from the same company. And so, you know, we don't need a second gas plant within the area. This gas plant is actually not going to be helpful for the community at all. It's not going to provide them energy. It's actually going to be brought to another city within New Jersey. And so it's not going to have any direct impact or benefit to, you know, the community of Woodbridge and the surrounding towns. And so I would just like you guys to take a step back and just think about the issue and how, you know, it really doesn't have any beneficial impact to those communities. It's just going to cause more harm, the pollution. And we want to make sure that we're protecting our air, protecting those communities that need it most. And yeah, thank you so much. And I hope you guys take my thoughts into consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. You know me. Allow me to reintroduce myself. I'm Charlie Cradaville. I'm from New Brunswick. And I know you know me as your favorite local journalist. But tonight, I'm here as the central Jersey organizer with Food and Water Watch, a national environmental group with over 60,000 members here in New Jersey. Our New Jersey headquarters is just a block away from where we are tonight. And I am extremely concerned about the plans for a massive gas-fired power plant in the K B section of Woodbridge. I've been against it ever since I learned about it in 2018. And I've been fighting it ever since. I did bring some information, some facts for you. And yeah, there's a lot of reasons to be against this. This would be extremely negative for the health of residents here in central New Jersey, as well as Staten Island. Some of those toxic pollutants that we're talking about are, from this plant alone, 148 tons of nitrogen oxides, or NOx, 125 tons of ammonia, 123 tons of particulate matter, 110 tons of carbon monoxide, 77 tons of total suspended particles, nearly 50 tons of VOCs with volatile organic compounds, almost 40 tons of sulfur dioxide, 25 tons of sulfuric acid, less than 2.5 tons of hazardous air pollutants, including less than 10 tons of formaldehyde. These are all facts from the application before the D E P right now. And these are numbers every year, annual emissions, if the plant is built. This stuff will be pumped into our air on top of all the other industrial pollution we have here in Middlesex County. We have more than our fair share under the state's environmental justice law. Nearly every part of the county is considered an environmental justice community. If the plant is built, it would be the third gas plant in Woodbridge and the sixth in our county. It would be about six miles from where we are tonight. And I'm really scared because particulate matter, the most dangerous kind of particulate matter is the PM 2.5, which is smaller than 2.5 microns. That can travel hundreds of miles through the air and remain airborne for a long time. And once it gets into your lungs, it goes deep in your lungs and stays with you for the rest of your life, causing, making it hard to breathe, making your life have less quality. And again, we are already overburdened here. The last thing we need is another major source of pollution right here at this nexus of Woodbridge, Edison, New Brunswick, East Brunswick. And that's why towns are taking a stand against it. So we are asking the county to follow the lead of municipal governments in Edison, Highland Park, Perthamboyte, as well as the Highland Park Board of Education and the City of Hoboken, and pass a strong resolution opposing this plan. There's still time to stop it. You are extremely influential, as was mentioned before. Municipal and county resolutions have been instrumental in stopping proposals like the gas plant that was planned for North Bergen. And I would like to respectfully request Uh, and I, I would like to respectfully request that you meet with some of our members who care deeply about this from around the county. Um, every person who is in central Jersey listening to this right now, I encourage them to speak up, raise your voice while you can and get involved on this issue, and that includes all of you. Your voice matters a lot and, uh, I would, I would like to, to ask you if, uh, Deputy Director, if you'd be willing to, to, to give us that meeting and allow us to, to sit down and have a, a dialogue about why the county should get involved on this.
Talk me into the meeting, Charlie.
Okay, I'll, I will hang out and, uh, I do want to encourage anybody else who's interested to come see me after the meeting. And I have, uh, some, some flyers and, uh, a sheet where you can sign up. Uh, we're doing a mass mobilization at the State House in Trenton on June the 23rd. And we're working with other frontline communities that are fighting other, uh, deeply troubling projects in those areas because ultimately we need to build a better future. I think the county sees the need to have a, a plan and, uh, you're working on the Destination 2040 Plan. More sources of toxic pollution that make it harder to breathe should be no part of that plan and we've got to stop this while we can. So I hope you'll join me in that fight and thank you for listening.
Uh, yes, Danielle Moore. I'm going to start off by saying my heart goes out to all the, the victims, to the parents of those shootings. But I will say that my anger goes to this commissioner's office due to where, back in April, when Little Sex County was here as well, due to where, for you to put a grant through saying, wow, only towards black violence. Because I'm still angry and I, due to where I'm a reporter and I'm a photographer, due to where I know violence comes in all colors, every race. And like I said, I would tell you, for each one of you that really wrote that, that only black viol, for, for black violence, oh, it's going to come back and bite you in your rear end. Like I said, come on, that was very heartbreaking. And like I said, I'm still angry. Due to where all, all the stuff that I see going on, it's just not by black. And like I said, I take that as a racial thing that you really wrote that on the paper stating that. But I would like to, uh, get to the good news. I would like to say thank you once again, Mr. Ron Sanders. I know you're an engineer, but like I said, a person with a very good heart, due to where, wow, out of your department, where the concern, we're talking about pollution in the air and I've been talking about pollution in that Raritan River where the wildlife did get back to me and explained to me the situation, the why those dead fish were down there, due to where it was only two breeds. That was carp and catfish. Due to where it had to be either from eating off the bottom of the river, pollute pollution, or due to where it was a virus between those breeds of fish. But wow, like I said, I thank you so much, due to where it wasn't even your department, but it shows, like I said, what a good heart you really have to, to, for, for other neighbors. God bless you. I'm on your good heart. Thank you. I just said, and I'm very, and that's the anger, and, and with the mayor, why would he, after showing all the garbage and the dead fish down there at the Raritan River, why would he invite and register people to go down there fishing Saturday, uh, uh, June, June 4th, invite families to go down there? Very angry to, like I said, all of that is cleaned up down there at the Raritan River. Why would he do that? And like I said, after I proved to you, what do you have to say about your mayor? Where they were dumping all the debris down there and I showed you the picture and no one commented on it. But wow, how after I said I heard, who, I'm going to take it to the news? How they were down there next day, cleaned it all up, cleaned it all up. Well, you have to say about mayor cares and that's the same thing you always freeze on every, every time, but like I said, come on. And one thing I'm going to speak up for the county, like I said, someone that I, where I would walk around through the neighborhood, I'm going to speak on something Mr. Cradaville has been bringing up. Due to where the same situation that last night, city council meeting, with their workers protesting because they won't get paid enough, how many employees are quitting with the city of New Brunswick and retirement. The same thing you're doing with what, the county. But one thing, you have the money and this is what do they have the money? If they have money to pay a contractor, what, $4 million to redo a park? Come on, you ought to think about your workers that are here for you. Wow, you've got money to keep wasting $450,000 every month on the building around the corner here for the past six months just to what, help the parking authority? The same thing with the city, what, paying them $175,000 a, a year? What, to clean George Street, Eastern Avenue, Rudson Avenue, and French Street and it's not being done? You're wasting my money. But wow, don't you give it to your hard-working people, due to where what? Like I said, I'm, I'm still pissed, due to where you wasted $4.5 million on the voting dock down there at the Raritan River, what's causing so much garbage down there polluting. Now you say it's a state situation? Wow, you spent $6 million on the state there to redo. I want to know, is that bringing you any income? Because I don't see four lines over there, ba- basically. But wow, don't you think about the people who are really busting their behinds, looking out, doing the right thing? Your, your workers. Please, you have the money. And, and like I said, due to where what? Due to where I walk around, due to where, God bless, like I said, I'm glad to see things are getting done in New Brunswick. But the only reason why I really say they are, what, between Rutgers? What, were you redoing what, all Eastern Avenue, French Street? It's good to see, what, to make Rutgers look good? How you did the whole Eastern Avenue, did, that, that, over there to look good? Now what, you're going to be doing the same thing over here on Jersey Avenue, what, to try to make that look good? How much money are you going to put into that, due to where, what, with the school being built at 50 Jersey Avenue? So please, it's not like you don't have the money. It's like you're the same thing as the city. Wow, you don't want to pay the ones who are really busting their behinds, but you pay the ones who are sitting on their behinds.
I'm tough. Before, before our next speaker, I do want to address one specific thing. Um, Danielle, you made mention of a resolution. This is not, this is not a back and forth. Um, I'm just addressing one issue, uh, not wasting your time. But, uh, you made several comments about a resolution that you felt was racist in its language and I want to correct the record here. There's a, when we get grants and we apply for grants, we have to then name the grant in the resolution. That particular grant was named that way by the person offering the grant, the federal program that was offering the grant. And so that was not a decision we made to label it or describe it in any way. That was literally what was given to us by the domer when they gave us the grant. So I just want to correct that because there's been several accusations that, uh, the administration or the board was racist in the language and that is not the case at all. Mr., our next speaker, please. That was not an engagement, Danielle. Our next speaker, please.
Good evening. I'm Sid Madison. I live at 176 Blackford Avenue in Piscataway. Uh, I'm going to ask you to ask the governor to enact a moratorium on all fossil fuel project, all new fossil fuel projects in New Jersey. And I'm going to back that request up with the following information. Is it important to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 2030? Without question, the world, the president, and the governor have all set a goal of reducing greenhouse gases by 50% by 2030. How could New Jersey accomplish that goal? First and foremost, by not allowing more fossil fuel infrastructure to be built in New Jersey. Those projects are 180 degrees in the wrong direction. How could this be accomplished? As I mentioned in my beginning, Governor Murphy has the power to do that. He can enact a moratorium on all new fossil fuel projects in New Jersey. Do we need new fossil fuel projects in New Jersey? Absolutely not. The BPU, Board of Public Utilities, commissioned a study, reported in December of 2021. There is no need for more fossil fuel plants in New Jersey. Why do we have private concerns that want to build more? Because FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, allows a 14% return on investment. These people want to make money. They don't want to worry about our health and our planet. The problems with this, with more, uh, fossil fuel power plants are just, they just give us more and more bad results. First, they will make the goal of the 50% reduction in greenhouse gas, gas emissions even more difficult to, uh, reach. They will make, add to the ground-level air pollution that you heard about, uh, expressed about the Woodbridge additional plant. Even worse, those are health variables. In the world, by the way, premature deaths because of fossil fuel pollution are in the millions every year. Part of those, uh, occur in New Jersey and more fossil fuel plants will make that worse. Another bad point is for ratepayers. First of all, they'll pay more immediately when these plants and infrastructures are done. Second, over the long haul, as renewables are less expensive and fossil fuels are more expensive, ratepayers will get it again. And later on, those fossil fuel plants will have to be decommissioned. More money for ratepayers. Any one of the fossil fuel plants that we're doing are going to screw the ratepayers. And lastly, not exactly the last thing, one more before the last thing. It will make the cost of capital more expensive to do all the renewable power plants and, uh, projects that we need. The capital used in the wrong direction is going to be more costly for other things. And last, the greatest and biggest problem with these things is going to make global warming and climate change much worse. I will meet with any of you or all of you to explain or document the statements that I've made. I will piggyback with your, with your, uh, allowing, um, Charlie and somebody to come with to you. If I can piggyback on that, I'll do that. Or, and you can come to Trenton with us, uh, and Charlie mentioned this, on June 23rd. We're going to lobby the governor and all the legislators to get this right. Stop fossil fuel plants in New Jersey. Thank you.
May I have a motion to close the public portion? All those in favor? May I have a motion to adjourn? All those in favor? Thank you, everyone. Thanks.